Would you call a board this meeting in Mercer County Board of Education? This is Cherno, roll call please.
District one, Amber Grandowski, here. District two, Larry Ayer.
Here.
District three, Billie McGarry.
Here.
District four, Cliff Corrigan.
Here.
And district five, Brayfield.
Here.
Time for our pledge of allegiance. It's Cherno. Everybody please stand and show your hands up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda this evening? I like your call. District of the governor makes the motion now second. Second. Mr. Corrigan, second on favor. Recognization.
So tonight we'll recognize our Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award winners. We call it Dairy Queen because the best thing about it is that each kid gets a free Blizzard. I'll bring that Blizzard coupon by by the end of the week to your class. But the Superior Titan Award winner, just so you know how they're chosen for this award from previous month, they have had perfect attendance during the month that they're being observed, completed all homework assignments and tests. Of course, they had to pass all those, had passing grades on all those assignments and tests. No discipline issues. They have to demonstrate great leadership skills and they have to exhibit a winning attitude and spirit toward learning and their peers. So it's a highly selected award and we've got four years, one from each school that we'd like to recognize tonight. And first up is our elementary Superior Titan Award winner for the month of September, and that goes to Amber Rae Woods. If you'd come on up. Congratulations, Amber Rae. Next up, we've got our intermediate Superior Titan Award winner for the month, and that's Reed Rowland. Congratulations, Reed. Our King Middle School Superior Titan Award winner is Henry Bell. Good job, Henry. And then our Mercer County Senior High School Superior Titan Award winner is Luke Fitz. Congratulations, Reed. When I bring your words about by the end of the week, it's a great mistake.
If you all want, there is a backdrop. It's that wall. If you'd like to go over there and take pictures of your students at your pride and we're all proud of them. So feel free to do that afterwards. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but you all can relax when you're finished. Okay, we'll continue on with our P P. We have no one signed up for public participation for this month. So we will start off with our reports. And first up will be our finding talks for our board members.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so hope your finding reports attached to this one. Our annual general fund catch balance for the month of September was 6.14 million as opposed to 5.01 million last year at the same time. Our overall revenue increased 4% compared to prior year at the same time, but our receipts mean 4% lower than they were last month. They were like way higher, like 19, 20% higher. So at this point, we're moving some of that revenue to coming in, which was really last year's revenue back in the last year. So it's seeing a rise in revenues around this area. General fund expenses are up 20% compared to prior year at the same time, and then there were expenses of 1.6 million in September. So that's the beginning now. For sure, because August is always a hotter month for us as well on these expenses. Those are your questions?
Next, we'll read our technical report.
I have a short speech this month. We just want to congratulate the Alexandriaians that have an audiobook attendance for this number two. And District five, we're 94.63, so like a hundred five, and I'll make it 94, so thank you all.
Okay, a question on the court is there for everyone to just probably, I think everyone probably has looked at already. So we will now move on to our student board member report. This is Cherno.
This is my first official student board report, so I'm excited to be here and be reporting on this. Well, last month, I was in the meeting. I would like to talk about the homecoming festivities that took place every month of September. Personally, coming from a freshman year in the pandemic and having to deal with that, I haven't really had the chance to experience what a normal high school homecoming feels like. It always feels like school morale has been a little bit low. It really hasn't felt like a school homecoming, and that changed this year. I was really grateful for the opportunity to see what homecoming can do to the spirits of students, especially in the high school. And I can see that the other students got involved as well. And it really just made for a very happy experience for everyone. Everyone was participating. I really loved that everyone started participating, especially at the high school level, and people were really getting involved, including people that normally probably wouldn't care as much about the festivities. They really kind of took up that role, and it was really exciting to see. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Good job. Listen, we've helped you out, we'll start first. All right, next is our middle school principal reporter, this is Jason Brown.
Thank you all. This is Cherno, great job. That was awesome. I'd like to thank Mrs. Buber, Board of Education, for allowing me to speak about a topic that I care a great deal about, and that's King Middle School and Mercer County Schools altogether. I would like to begin by saying that I feel that our school system is in great shape, and much of that is thanks to you all and your all's leadership and getting better each year. The mindset of being the best is working. When I took over now two years ago, I wanted to focus on increasing the school culture and overall physical condition of KMS. I believe it's 60 years old now. And I feel like KMS is looking as good as I've seen it, and hopefully we can find a contractor to bid on our restroom deal coming up and make it look even better. Fingers crossed. School culture isn't just about happy parties and pajama days and hat days. School culture is about winning, and I think that is important. And I think you win by your people and hiring great staff members. I think you will see in a few weeks, hopefully, that you think we're winning, we think we're winning, and what we're doing is working as a school and district as a whole. There are so many things I could talk about this year at King Middle School, but I'm going to just stick to five talking points. First, I'd like to talk about the enrollment. We will project that 602 kids to start this year, a year ago, and we started the year over 630. And the first nine weeks in, we have maintained over 20 of students over that 602 projection. That's a big deal, and that's not something that necessarily shows up in the school report card, but I think that's a vital indicator because our families and trust us with their students. Staffing. We are fully staffed and believe it or not, in 2020, I hear that's a big deal. I talked to area principals, superintendents, and that's not the reality of home districts. But at King Middle School, we're fully staffed. We have two teams at each grade level, one special education teacher on each team, a past teacher that works with behavior, and an MSD teacher for our MSD group. One staff member in particular I'd like to highlight is our librarian, Mrs. Lisa McQueen. She's done an outstanding job. She's absolutely transformed the KMS library and has been doing some innovative things with maker space, teaching engineering. She's also created a top 25 AR reader list, which Henry Bell is way up there, you just saw. And she's been named in the library in honor of the highest AR recipient each nine weeks. So right now, our librarian is named in honor of Van Dale Hayes, eighth grade student. Lisa has added to our school culture. Mission statement. New for KMS this year, we have a newly created mission statement for the school. It was identified and established by the student council last year as a need. I think it's terrific. The council hooked up with our site base, decision-making committee, and faculty and engaged in all stakeholders in its direction. The new mission statement reads, "The KMS students and staff strive to discover new heights, not just within ourselves, but within each other, so that we can all learn with passion, act with courage, and change the world." And that was 100% student this year. And we've recently made some posters and signs where we put them in the school. An example of this mission statement, we had our Red Cross Club do a fundraiser that we're going to highlight in our Better State Program later tonight to honor the Kentucky National Guard Memorial in Frankfurt. And that was actually a fundraiser we did 10 years ago. If you remember, we raised thousands of dollars and sold T-shirts and different things. And we were, 2012, one of the few middle schools in state Kentucky to help raise money. And that's a big deal because the Kentucky National Guard Memorial highlights the Harrisburg Tankers. And that's been a passion of mine to try to bring attention to. And the Harrisburg Tankers have the largest percentage of names on the Kentucky National Guard Memorial. So our kids have raised several hundred dollars that we're going to hand to the Kentucky National Guard in the Better State Program to help to upheaval the memorial. So we're proud of them, and that highlights our mission statement. Goal setting. New for this year, every student has a mentor that creates weekly, short-term, smart goals. And that's one of the highest returns we can do with our students, is get them more self-directed and looking at their own needs and creating short-term goals and achieving those short-term goals. Each student has a mentor that checks in with them and gives them feedback and guidance. This has been really cool to see, and students work on their goals. Finally, our priority plan. We have three goals we're working towards this year. First goal is to increase proficiency levels. I continue to increase proficiency levels throughout the school in all content areas, and that we're going to keys to success is working with standards, continue focus on engagement at rigor, getting in our teachers' classrooms to give them feedback, and best practices in all classrooms. Our second goal is to increase our attendance to 95% or above for the year, and that's also a district goal. And we're doing that keys to success monthly attendance incentives for students, P B I S, Titan tickets, and Student of the Month. And finally, to reduce our major office referrals by 5% to 10% by the end of the year. Our keys to success in achieving that goal are consistent teaching of our P B I S, our Titan ticket, weekly incentives, retraining for staff members that need help, our P B I S, M T S S structures. And lastly, we're having a chili family night this Thursday night. If you're free, we're going to check out the school. We have a free bowl of chili. Might have some peanut butter sandwiches. I'm working on that right now. But would like to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your time and thank you for your service to our community and school staff.
It was gorgeous. I love the whole name of the library as an incentive.
I'm happy to hear about the goals because sometimes I think, I think making smaller goals that are more attainable really can drive the self-esteem of our kids.
I agree.
That's actually...
Because they can achieve those goals.
The bar can raise just a little more and a little more each time, but making things attainable, that's tremendous, I think. That's great.
But the one thing I love about the library thing, much like the whole thing in the hospital, is that visual, it's that, I love that. I know I gotta give it, that's a goal that you can seek, and that's a reward that's displayed. Good job. Good report.
And I will say that too, that I know that there was like a trip plan for anybody who met their AR goals. I've seen, because I have one in the middle school, I see every good incentive that you all are putting out there, and I just want to say as a parent that I really appreciate that.
Next superintendent report, Mr. Buber.
Well, good evening. I always talk about our three things that we feel like are most important in this district that make us great, and that's academics, arts, and athletics. And I know I talked to Mr. McCowles for a lot over the last couple of weeks about upcoming test scores released. I know we did a lot today, and I asked him about the academic portion of this superintendent report. He just kind of says over the board about, you can't say much because everything in bar doors will happen on October 31st. He can say enough to work, and he don't give anything away. You got a great mission. You always have to hold me back, okay?
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I just, it's great to hear the school reports on what they're doing there. You know, we're away in the school, and I would acknowledge that all of our departments and our schools are doing, implementing some great things. And we, at this point, we've given our universal screener to all of our paid students. We've got state test results back, so we have a lot of things moving and working. Mr. Buber and I also went personally and observed this at every, you may or may not talk about that, but maybe at every classroom. This, all those things are, really, we feel like are part of our, you know, big plan that we have and a great support for our people and our schools and our students. Trying to get them all worked together to meet these benchmarks and ultimately to try to reach our long-term, our long-term goals that we have for being about 20 on the ACT, for meeting 60% or above in professional distinguish and 10% below, and I was in every subject in every grade. So anyway, we had test results back. We got them back very early in school. We had a couple months with them to work with some corrections and things, some state law and things like that. And then on the 31st, will actually be the first time that the school report card will be published that day for media and for dissemination. And so on November 1st, we'll have another period from November 1st to 13th to make corrections and changes on the individual items. But yeah, we, the good thing about setting benchmarks and setting goals is that you push each other, challenge each other, and then, you know, that's difficult work. And so when you meet any of those things, no matter how small or big, it's a time to celebrate. We do have some things absolutely to celebrate. And we've been fortunate again, even on the universal screener that I already tested and we've had over the last couple of years, that we've had a lot of things to celebrate. We've seen just small, continuous growth, and that's what we want to see. And so, yeah, we're inside of that, just a couple of weeks of being able to really put a factor together that we can announce and talk to people about where we come, couple that together, what we've done with the ACT and attendance and these elements like that to really give a good overview of where we stand and what we've achieved, and celebrate that with people, and then look at what our next step will be.
Time to report.
Thank you, sir. Good report. And again, Mr. Bryant, good job giving us for our King Middle School. I appreciate that. Just to add on the academic section, we did have record boards to the, I think I shared a picture of them in the cafeteria at the high school. We've got the valedictorian's salutatorium records on there, as well as all of the Mr. Tate with them, and got the academic wall of fame up. So those are really, really nice additions to the high school. We are preparing for the release of the scores to go public here in a couple of weeks, and he told me the only thing I can say is our community is going to be very, very proud of our Titans. I think so. I can say that. In the arts, I know Mr. Bryant talked about his staff. We're excited. We noticed last year that we had a gap for our amps acquired between the intermediate and high schools. So now we've hired the amps teacher, and we're looking forward to closing that gap so our kids in third grade all the way up till their senior year can now have choir offering. Marching bands looking forward to the, I guess, the postseason with our state competitions beginning. Postseason competition's coming up, so we wish them the best of luck. In athletics, our football team is 6-1. They're playing for the regular season district championship this Friday night at Gier County, and then they'll close out the season at home against Lincoln County the next Friday. So we want to wish them the best of luck here at the end of this regular season and going into the postseason. Volleyball is starting here in just a few minutes with Bergen in the district tournament tonight. And then I was over at high school today, and we're excited about the new trophy case that we're putting in right when you enter our school on the right to the cafeteria. It'll have a whole wall of each sport's highest trophy that they could win. And in order to replace that trophy, you have to at least tie it, four feet it. So if you've won the region, then you've got, you've got to either win the region or win a game at the state tournament in order to replace that trophy. So it's a neat tradition, neat tradition to have at the high school, and it's looking really good. They just got a few squares of carpet left, correct? That's it, right? And tomorrow, I don't know, Mr. Tate, he's going to start putting the trophy on the shelves. It's really pretty. It's a first-class, new trophy case. So a couple other things, we're still in the design phase of the elementary school. We're wrapping those things up. I know we've talked with the architects at Trace Creek about landscape, playgrounds, exterior drainage, kitchen, traffic flow, interior plumbing, flooring throughout the school, furniture and what that's going to look like. Those are just some of the things we've been talking about over the last couple of weeks of the Davenport Elementary School. We are looking forward to the bids. Hopefully, we'll get some for King Middle School Battle Project coming up in the next couple of weeks. Traffic on Mobley Road, I know there's an article in the newspaper about that. I had a couple of different conversations with the city, the county, and the state about that. And I just want to remind you, I know the county's building their roads to all 35 miles per hour. We just got to remind people that on Mobley Road, it's 25 miles per hour at all times. If you sit down there and watch the traffic on Mobley Road, it's really, really fast, above 25 miles an hour. So we're going to do some things. I know the city's going to put the striping of Mobley Road here because the lines are starting to fade really bad, and they're going to add some signage and some new, you know, lights up there. And so we're trying to improve on Mobley Road with the city, county, and state to make some improvements there. But again, I just want to remind everyone that it's 25 miles an hour down Mobley Road at all times, not just during the school. And I can't say enough about our entire Titans staff. They put in a lot of hard work over the last year in order to celebrate here in a couple of weeks with our test scores being released.
Can I ask a question? So the intersection there at Mobley and Tap is really bad when you're coming from Mobley, and you need to turn to the drop-off of the hospitals there. So when, you can't see what's coming in this lane, especially particularly at that time because buses are running. So the buses are coming in this lane directly in front of you, and then over here, you can't see. So, I mean, is it possible to do a four-way stop there or something?
So one way, the best-case scenario would be to put a roundabout in there according to the state administration department. That's about a half a million dollars to put in a roundabout, which is something, you would think it would be a half a million.
Yeah, I know they are.
But what they're looking to do, like if you get to Lexington during a Kentucky football rescue call game, they have their police on the side of the corner. They're not standing out in traffic because that would be very dangerous for a cop to scan out in that big intersection of Mobley and Tap. So what they're looking to do is install a traffic light to work during the school times, and that'd be the morning and the afternoon pickup. That would be where you could control it over there by the pole out of the traffic so you could change it. But then during, while school's in session, when there's not any school traffic, you would just have it red flashing on Tap, yellow flashing on Mobley to hopefully slow everyone down. Because what's happening is it's the Tap traffic that they're trying to jet across Mobley, and I don't know if they don't know that Mobley's not stopping because it's only yellow, but that's where the problems are happening. So they're looking at, instead of putting a roundabout in, the cheaper, which is not cheap, you put a traffic light, but it is a little bit less expensive to just put a traffic light into one where the police can control it during those morning times and the afternoon drop-off times.
Yeah, that'd be great because it is a little scary there. I just, because from anywhere, you're just thinking, whose turn is it? We're, you know...
I'm worried more about the future of roundabout there as opposed to the traffic. Do you ever like roundabout over there now? Could you turn that whole walk?
Just talking about the stoplights there, would it be set up or could it be set up to where, like, and I don't know what street it is on Daggel, the street coming down from Bergen and there, the intersection there, there's a four-way stop there that runs all the time, and you only have one of the four lanes running at a time. That way, if people wanted to turn left at that section, then they could turn left. Or now, we're not supposed to have a turn left on those. But if you triggered one side of one, then another, then another, then another, then that would give everybody a chance. The thing that you would have to do in that case would be, which you never hear of this, is no right turn unless you're, unless you're going. You know, I mean, no right turn on red, put it that way. Like, if you come up and it's red, you stop and you stay stopped two years terms, then you can turn right after a little straight through. That's something, that's something that I was thinking about the other day, that that might be a better way of doing it than if you triggered to go straight through both directions, back and forth, just two directions, then it still stops people from being able to turn left, which at that intersection, more than the high school, if you're going around the backside of the high school, coming up over the road, then you need really to turn left there. And same way coming back the other way, if they want to turn to go toward the elementary school, it would enable them to be able to turn left at that intersection. school, it would enable them to be able to turn left at that intersection.
And I think that's kind of what you're, that's what they're looking at, what to be able to control. Be able to control.
I understand, and be able to turn left anywhere.
Yes. And they're, they're able to control that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think that it's a great idea, just as long as there's some direction there, because right now, it just bears with me, so I think any kind of direction is going to be an improvement.
It's like I told the city, county, and state, though, it doesn't matter if you put a roundabout, a stop sign, or a stoplight there. If you have people that just run stop signs, stoplights, then there's nothing you can do about that's going to stop.
Yeah, I think that nice that was someone runs stop signs.
Yeah, that might do the same thing.
And they'll run the stoplight too, so it's not, it's not, no offense, no matter what you do. At least you're going to create that awareness just now.
Yes.
It'll take time, everybody needs to.
Put the gate up. Raise your gate up now if it's your turn.
Anything else, any questions in the court? Thank you very much. Concern agenda, we only had a couple of items. Board meeting minutes and invoices from last month. Does anybody have any questions or discussions about any of those? If nothing, cannot get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Governor, next motion, can I have a second, please? Mr. Francesco, second, all in favor? Okay, so if no other business to discuss, can I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Governor, next motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brewer, second, all in favor? Need an adjournment, thank you.